All right. Good evening, everybody. Thank you. I'm going to call to order the February 19th, 2025 Board of Commissioners meeting. Welcome to everybody in the hall here and on Zoom. We're going to start off with the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by Commissioner Lewis. Thank you, Commissioner Lewis. Item number two, would the manager please call the roll?
Yes, good evening. Commissioner Arman.
Here.
Commissioner Brockington.
Here.
Commissioner Cherico.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Norris.
Here.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Here.
And Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Here.
Everyone is present.
All right. Thank you, Manager Elliott. Item number three, the Sunshine Act announcement. Mr. D'Azio, our solicitor, will provide that.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The board has met an executive session twice since the last public meeting. The board met on February 2nd, 2025. The purpose of that executive session was to conduct the Township Manager's annual evaluation. And then the board also met an executive session this evening prior to tonight's public meeting, February 19th, 2025, and we discussed a matter of potential acquisition of real estate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. D'Azio. Moving on to item number four, public comment on agenda items. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public, either here in the hall or on Zoom, to provide public comment on an item that is found on the agenda. There will be other opportunities to provide comment either during agenda items or at Citizens Forum, when you can provide comment on anything you would like. But this is the time to provide comment, if you would like, on agenda items. So we'll start here in the hall. If anyone is interested in providing public comment on an agenda item, please raise your hand or come up to the podium, and you'll be recognized. Ms. Haywood, please state your name and the area of the township where you live.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Julie Haywood. I live in Wincote. And here as the President of the Library Board, this evening, I know one of our board members, Myron Goldman, is going to be recognized for 10 years of service. So I wanted to say thank you, Myron, for your dedication and commitment to the Cheltenham Township Library System, and your dedication to the Elkins Park friends. So just wanted to recognize Myron as one of the individuals. And I know that some of the EMS and police are here tonight, so just wanted to personally thank them for all of their hard work over the last couple of days. I'm sure you got very little sleep, but we thank you for protecting the community and for keeping the fire in the bay and so that, yeah, there were no injuries involved. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Haywood. Any other public comment here in the hall? All right, I'm going to look to Zoom. It looks like we have one taker. Mr. Guest, please, unmeet yourself and go ahead. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. Yeah, just real quick to the comment that was just made. I just, I know there's been sort of a major emergency in our community over the last few days, and I didn't see it on the agenda at all. And so I know that it's a new thing. So I just was hoping perhaps that that would be addressed sort of at the top of the meeting in some fashion. So I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Guest, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Haywood, for raising it. It's not on the agenda because we have to put out the agenda with a certain amount of time. But at the conclusion of public comment, we are going to have a report from our Police Chief, John Slaven, our Fire Marshal, Scott Lynch, and our Public Information Officer, Lauren Walter, about the events, provide updates, provide resources for people to get additional information and such. So yes, that is, that is top of mind, as well as the, it's top of mind to report out, and also top of mind to thank all of our first responders for their service during this unbelievably difficult emergency. So thank you, Mr. Guest, for raising that. Any other public comment on agenda items? All right. So we're going to close public comment on the agenda items. But before we move on to items five, six, seven, and eight, which recognizes many of the individuals who have dedicated their time and energy to our township, both as volunteers and staff, we are going to get a report from Chief Slaven, Fire Marshal Lynch, and Ms. Walter regarding the SPS event. So should I turn it over to Fire Marshal Lynch first? So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening. As most of you know, there's a major fire incident that is still ongoing at the SPS Technologies Plant at 301 Highland Avenue in Abington Township. The Cheltenham Township Fire Department, Cheltenham Township Fire Marshal's Office, Cheltenham Township Emergency Management Team, and the Cheltenham Township Police Department have been active on the scene at this incident since it started at approximately 9:45 PM Monday evening. We first would like to acknowledge a tremendous thanks to the volunteer firefighters from across several counties who have been working in shifts around the clock and continue to do so. This was a five-alarm fire with 68 counties' companies responding overnight and taking shifts since it began, and they continue to do so. The dedicated effort cannot be overstated. At this time, there are no reported injuries to employees or any of our first responders. While this is an Abington Township incident, this is a regionally impacted event. Throughout the duration of this event, Cheltenham Township has had representation at the command post and has been involved in the decision-making process. All decisions were thoroughly made with input from expert partners organizing based on ongoing changes in conditions. With this being a major event, Abington Township has signed a disaster declaration. Any future reimbursement costs will be purchased, pursued, I'm sorry, will be pursued under that declaration. The township continues to protect the interests of our citizens throughout the event. Additional agencies involved in managing the incident include all of the Abington, Cheltenham, and Janketown Borough Police Fire Emergency Management and their school districts, Standard Press Steel SPS representatives, the U.S. EPA, the Pennsylvania DEP, PIMA, Montgomery County Department of Public Safety, the Montgomery County Hazmat Team, the Montgomery County Health Department, the Montgomery County Urban Church and Rescue, SEPTA, ACWA, the PA Health Department, PICO, and ATF. Local officials, including Congresswoman Dean, Senator Haywood, Representative Nelson, the Montgomery County Commissioners, and Governor Shapiro, have all shown their support to the impacted communities. Turn this over to Chief Slaven now.
Okay. Just to let everyone know, I responded to this incident about 40 minutes into it that night. Immediately reported to the Command Center there. I was in constant communications with our Township Manager, our Fire Marshal, and our emergency management personnel. Early on during this event, a one-mile shelter-in-place recommendation came out based on unfolding events that were occurring in the early morning hours of the fire. Cheltenham Township staff, as Scott had mentioned, were in direct communication with Cheltenham School District, our nursing homes, other critical facilities located directly within the one-mile shelter-in-place zone. School and all three districts were canceled that day, in addition to the impact on private parochial and universities in that zone. A decision was made to delay our trash collection within the shelter, shelter radius, out of abundance of caution for the safety of our employees. We had conversations with SEPTA, and a decision was made to close the SEPTA regional rail lines that travel directly through this area. On, at 10:30 on Tuesday, February 18th, conditions at the scene had changed. When we went to bed, we had a press conference, 7:00 AM. We had a stable condition at that point, and readings were good for air and water. The firefighters were continuing to address the issue with the fire. And we had a press conference at the Abington Township complex to update the community on what was going on and where we were at in the process. At 10:30 that day, on Tuesday, the 18th, conditions at the scene changed, prompting a self-evacuation of a section of Janketown Borough. The area was chosen through expert review, the wind conditions, and the voluntary measures were done in abundance of caution. Cheltenham High School was made available as a shelter for evacuees. That's a pre-authorized location for events. And the Red Cross responded to assist us with that endeavor. Cheltenham Township Police and our EMS responded to that location, stayed throughout the night at Cheltenham High School to be assistance at the shelter if needed. Shelter-in-place and evacuation were lifted at 11:00 AM today after a press conference to update the community. SEPTA resumed normal service in our area shortly after that notification. And Cheltenham Township Schools, unregulably for the children, will be open for school tomorrow, Thursday, February 20th. Our trash collection had resumed immediately after we got the, the okay. And once the announcement was spread publicly, so our trash personnel were back out collecting the trash in that affected area. Press conferences had been held, like I said, at the Abington Township Complex, 7:00 AM and 4:00 PM on Tuesday, and 10:00 AM on Wednesday. I was part of those, those presentations, and the Cheltenham representative was in attendance as part of a unified response. This was a unified response between Cheltenham, Abington, and Janketown Borough, along with Montgomery County and a whole list that Scott had mentioned of community partners and emergency partners that helped us respond to this incident. Excuse me. At the press conference, one of the things that came up was notifications. And one way to improve notifications that was pushed out was Ready Monco. Ready Monco and Reverse 911 were used to notify our residents that were affected in the impact zone. In addition to township alerts, you can sign up for Ready Monco alerts. It's one of the fastest ways to get important county notifications. All you have to do is go and search Ready Monco, and you can choose how you want this, this information received and what notifications you want to use. We use several sources of information to get the word out to our community. Cheltenham Township Emergency Management, Cheltenham Township, Cheltenham Police all utilized their social media platforms to update the community on what was going on. Cheltenham Township alert texts and emails, especially as it pertained to shelter-in-place, were made out. And the decision to halt trash collection was also put out to notify our residents. Press releases has been shared on an ongoing basis, well, once Abington Township released them to us. Abington was the lead agency involved with this. This is their incident. We were assistants of that. And like I said, as Scott said, truly a joint effort, teamwork. And it was really evident to me that we worked very closely with these individuals every day. Everyone's on a first-name basis, on a first-name basis with a lot of the other agencies that, that assisted us. Our volunteer fire company is, companies, as Scott had mentioned, I can't take my hat off enough to you guys. You guys were awesome. These guys came out, fought this basis, a very big fire. And, you know, they answered the call. I'm very proud of you guys for all the hard work that was put into that as well. Going forward, Abington Township has set up a website to compile all past and future information releases, including past press releases and the press conferences and press conference recordings. And you can get that information at abingtonpa.gov/spsupdates. I'm going to turn this back over to you, Scott.
Yeah, as the chief said, hats off to our fire companies, just so everybody is well aware. The units that first responded between Cheltenham, Janketown, and Abington are 100% volunteer. I was there shy of 18 hours straight. Our guys were there. When I was home trying to sleep, they were back there. And they were there through the night helping with this. So again, hats off. I'd like to address, at this point, if I can, air and water quality concerns. Water collection basins that were at the Standard Press Steel facility, regular operations overflowed when the power was cut due to the fire operations. Some of the contaminants did run off into the Tocany Creek, and trace levels of chemicals were detected on Tuesday. The Philadelphia Water Department was notified. Tankers were brought in to pump off the basins and be removed to be properly discarded. DEP has re-sampled the creek today, and those results are not yet available. The air quality that was done and the water testing were, you know, minute traces. Again, all of the actions taken by the Unified Command System were in abundance of caution. So the evacu, voluntary evacuations and everything like that. Hopefully, you know, this is, this answers all the questions. Mr. President, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Yeah, thank, thank you both. So I am gonna just say a couple of things. I may have a question, and I'll open up to board questions. If anyone in the public has questions, there is the information that's going to be on the website. I suggest people sign up for Monco Ready Alerts, and we will continue to put out information through our website, through our social media channels, to make sure that folks are getting timely and accurate information. So just a couple of comments. I'm going to piggyback off of what Fire Marshal Lynch and Chief Slaven said about our first responders. So thank goodness, there were no injuries. An amazing, an amazing feat and a testament to the professionalism at all levels. And whether, whether we're talking about our law enforcement personnel, our township staff in terms of public works, emergency management, or our volunteers, all of them deserve our gratitude and appreciation. And on behalf of the board, please express that for us. I spoke personally to at least two of the chiefs, and one, one story that I heard from Fire Marshal Lynch, which, which I'll relay, is while three of our fire companies were, well, all four fire companies were dealing with this emergency situation, a crew at Lamont went back and stood, stood at the fire station in order to make sure that if there was any other emergency, which, which happens in Cheltenham, that we would be covered. So we had folks on scene, in the township, all over, just doing an amazing job. And it's very, very much appreciated. So if anyone's thinking about giving this year, your volunteer fire companies, et cetera, are a great place, Red Cross, all great places to provide donations. The, the questions I have are as follows. Going forward, we're going to have communications out of Abington, and we will push those out as well. What sort of continued monitoring is going to take place, both from a fire safety point of view, from an air quality point of view, and a water quality point of view?
I'll address that. So DEP, EPA, multiple hazmat teams from multiple counties will be working in conjunction with Abington Township and throughout the investigation. Because even though the fire's under control, the more investigatory is, the more removing of debris, there's going to be off-gassing. It's already been decided that they will be on-site. They have monitors throughout on poles. They have a mobile unit that will be driving through the neighborhood. And if there's any alarming, anything alarming, a plan will be activated immediately, and precautions will be taken.
Thank you. Genius. The, my next question is, so as the, as the immediate fire emergency is extinguished, the next step, I assume, is to get in there and find out what the cause was and, and that sort of thing. Is that something that Cheltenham will be involved in as well?
Yes. Even though this is an Abington Township incident, this is a very large-scale incident. My assistance has been requested through the Abington Township Fire Marshal's Office. Off and on, the police will still be there at the command post. This is going to continue off and on, not off and on. This, for us, it'll be off and on. But this is going to continue for weeks to come because of the magnitude of this. And again, the resources that were mentioned earlier, they're all going to be involved in this as well.
Thank you. And then last question, taking it one step further. At some point, there's going to be a cleanup process. And do we have information about that process and how that's going to take place, and who's going to be involved in that?
Yes, we do. So the Standard Press Steel Technologies Plant is listed, it's with the state, it's already a SARAH III site because of what they deal with.
SARAH III is?
Hazardous materials site, okay? Being a SARAH III, the quantities that they keep on-site and things like that. So that's where the DP, DEP, EPA, and hazmat team will come into play. The LEPC for the county, Local Emergency Planning Commission, will be involved in that, which I'm a member of. And this is not going to just be a put it in a dumpster and take it away type of thing. There is cooperation from the owners. Again, it's a unified cooperation between three communities, because three communities are affected by this. And unfortunately, we're going to be involved in this somehow during the duration of this.
Thank you. So understanding that there's a lot going on, and there's a lot that will continue to go on. Again, we appreciate all your efforts and, and the fact that you're probably doing it on very little sleep as well. It really is appreciated. I will, oh, go ahead. I was going to turn it over to some of my colleagues, in case anyone else had a question. Yeah.
I just want to make an additional comment. Okay. I mentioned a lot about the, the fire department. You know, the police were there and continue to be there. If this was an incident that happened in Cheltenham Township, we wouldn't have to pick up the phone and ask for help. They would, they would be right there next to us through something like this. That's the teamwork we have, and that's the professional working relationship we have with our communities around us. So rest easy that if something like this happens, we're going to have all the help we need. And at no point, at no point during this entire incident, were any of our residents, we had fire companies from other townships in the helping. They were in our stations. We had additional police coverage, we had ambulance coverage. So there was no jeopardy to our residents in that aspect.
Yeah, thank you for that. It's a good point that, you know, we are a separate township from Abington, but we're neighbors. And we're there for our Abington neighbors. We know that in the public safety and first responder realm, that you're all sisters and brothers and, and got each other's back. But we, as a township, also are there for our neighbors in Abington and Janketown during this incident. So we appreciate all the effort there. I will open up for a few questions from the board, if anybody has. I'll, I'll start with Commissioner Rappaport.
Yeah, thank you very much. First of all, again, thank you very much to all of our first responders and all the continuing efforts. I, as one who also didn't get any sleep because there were so many Cheltenham residents who could, who were watching the flames from our own windows, there, it's, it's been a rough couple of days. So thank you. A couple of questions. You all mentioned the disaster declaration. Will our people be party to any reimbursements that are necessary? Will that be coming back to our, our agencies?
So the emergency management coordinator is on, and I believe Kim is on. But what I'm going to speak on is what we've been told to, by Abington, was to gather up information from our fire companies, police departments, things like that. Any equipment that was lost, anything has to be replaced and submitted to them. Again, I'm going to let Ken speak on this because there's criteria involved with a disaster, disaster declaration. So if Ken can jump on.
I don't think we need to get into details, except to say that under the new guidelines, we can apply through Abington Township, who has declared a disaster, for reimbursement, as Scott said, for items we've lost, damaged, and the same stuff we've applied for in the past from PIMA. Over the course of time, Abington will move forward with that, and we can send them a complete list, as we've done in the past.
Thank you. Next question, concerns. The concerns that Commissioner Arman mentioned in terms of the cleanup, as we move into the cleanup, many of us remember, have been in the community a long time, remember some of the violations that this company has had in the past. And so there's a level of, I won't say distrust, but, but there's a level of concern about permits and the level of being held accountable to, to clean up in the most reliable and safe manner. So just, just expressing the concerns that have come through me, to me, that Cheltenham is really advocating for its residents as, as much as we possibly can. And that, that goes, even though we might not be getting our drinking water directly through the likely contaminated sources, even down to, prior to this emergency, there was a level of salinity in the drinking water that we were getting just because of the drought, because of the other things, that was, in a sense, poo-pooed by many people in the public. And yet, we've got a public that has, for example, almost 50% of the adults in this country have high blood pressure. And so the salinity itself is an issue, whether EPA views it that way or not, whether those standards. And I give that as an example of the kind of standard and advocacy that we need to be presenting on behalf of our people. So I'll just leave it at that, and thank you again for your vigilance.
Thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Just two questions. Chief, in your timing, was the hazmat declaration done immediately, given the SPS chemicals and history, having some of those toxic materials on site?
Yes, as, as this incident grew and conditions changed rapidly several times throughout this event, that's that monitoring that Scott had mentioned, the air monitoring, where are we at with the chemicals, their own location at that manufacturing facility, where's the fire in relation to that, all those things, played a decision in, what steps do we take to safeguard our residents? We relied on our experts with the DEP, with EPA, with the Montgomery County Hazmat, with the fire chiefs, and there was a room full of people. Cheltenham, talking about advocating for Cheltenham, I'm sitting in the EOLIC from, from the beginning. So we had a voice in there advocating for our residents and the safety of our residents. That was my responsibility in that setting. And, you know, everybody there, this was truly a joint effort. We were united in addressing this issue, all three communities. And like I said, we worked very well together. The teamwork was very obvious there. So that decision was made based on, on what we were seeing and relying on our experts for their, their best advice on how we can safeguard our residents.
Thanks, Chief. Was there any consideration to evacuate Cheltenham Township residents that lived within close proximity to the event?
Like I said, we were relying on the experts, the weather model, and all those events that impact our decision on what areas would be, would be immediately impacted. The time of night, the weather conditions, we're talking 19 degrees at night, approximately. Um, the time of night, the weather conditions, we're talking 19 degrees at night, approximately one o'clock in the morning, one thirty in the morning. Um, no matter what decision was made to, to shelter in place to take them out, we're dealing with the, you know, difficult conditions, very challenging situation. Um, you know, and we're trying to think of the best methods to safeguard our residents. Shelter in place was the best alternative overnight. I can speak to that, was present for that conversation and actively involved in that. And that was the decision was made.
Chief, uh, to you, to, you know, your team, to the fire folks, EMS, et cetera, and everybody involved. Obviously we appreciate it. I think some of the questions we're asking reflects some of the concerns that we've heard from some of our residents. So thank you immensely and that everybody, day in and day out, you put yourselves on the line. That it's an exceptional commitment to the township and to our residents. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. Commissioner Brockington.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. Chief, I, I just want to say to you and to Scott that I, I'm just so proud of our staff and what you guys have done. I know you guys were working hard over there, but I also want to thank the school district for jumping in and opening up the gym or wherever they did to allow our, our, our families to go there. Um, I think that was something that they did quickly, um, and the fact that the school district was ready, um, and able to do that. And then Chief, on that note, do we know how many people didn't utilize? Um, the school?
I went to the, uh, emergency shelter when it was first opened up. There were eight individuals in there. Uh, they dwindled down as the event went on. Uh, there was one person left in there at about nine o'clock or so, nine thirty this morning. Believe there was one resident left there. So, um, this was something to put into place. We wanted to make sure that there was an avenue for someone to go to if they needed assistance.
Yeah, so definitely I want to thank Cheltenham School District, but you, you two guys and your staff have done an amazing job and, um, get some rest.
Commissioner Cherico.
Thank you very much. Uh, and again, thank you for everything that you and your teams have done. Uh, Fire Marshal Lynch, you have mentioned, uh, the contamination in the water and that is the, the requ- the questions that I've gotten from, uh, multiple residents over the past two days is, is exactly that. Um, what is the chemicals that have, what, what are the chemicals, excuse me, that have been identified in the creek? Uh, and, and how severe is this? And I, I know you said we're waiting for results of another DEP test. Um, should people, uh, you know, obviously what, what is the level of concern here moving forward?
All right. So to be honest with you, uh, I am absolutely not sure exactly of the chemicals that made it in there. Um, I know there was many different chemicals we were dealing with. Um, the testing was done immediately. As soon as the hazmat team got there, they immediately deployed for air monitoring and water monitoring in the creeks. Um, and water monitoring in the stormwater system as well. Uh, as far as, um, anything else, the DEP has, um, all that information and they're, they're constantly posting it on their websites and things like that. Uh, that, at this point, it's not alarming that we're aware of. We would have been notified if something different. Maybe Lauren has additional information.
Ms. Walter, please.
Hi, I just wanted to say I was, um, at the communications meeting around this event at noon with a number of those agencies, uh, that was coordinated by Abington. Uh, I was informed that the DEP is working on creating a webpage to publish the results of that testing. So if that is not live today, um, it'll likely be tomorrow. Because we know that that is a priority for our residents.
That's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You know, Commissioner Lewis.
Yes, uh, first I'd like to echo the sentiments of my colleagues for the, uh, heroic efforts of our first responders. And not just in this situation, but the things that you do every day, uh, for the good of our community. Um, secondly, does anyone know when the last time SPS was inspected?
Yes, uh, the, uh, Fire Marshal's Office did their annual inspection, the Abington Township Fire Marshal Office did their annual inspection in September. Um, and corrections were, or infractions were identified and corrections were made.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you. Everybody, um, the, the one last thing I'll say is, um, there, there, uh, have been businesses in the local area that have been impacted and will continue to be impacted by this. So, um, if you are looking to stop in a restaurant or buy something for a loved one, don't forget to shop local and you, and patronize our local businesses, which, uh, lost business the last couple of days and could probably use the help. All right. Uh, all right, we're going to close, uh, this item, uh, and, oh, I'm sorry, Chief has one more thing to say.
Sir, you brought up a great point about a shout out to local businesses, uh, the Highland Restaurant there, right next door. Uh, served as a command post. Uh, they opened up their facilities, bathrooms, warm place to, to operate there, TVs, access to that stuff, the internet. Um, it, it was a tremendous help to us in those difficult conditions. Uh, that owner was awesome. They were great to us and, uh, that, that's one of the things we'll be following up on to thank you.
Yeah. Commissioner Brockton says he went to Cheltenham School District, maybe, right? Is that right? Uh, okay. Um, see, take care of our own. Uh, so, um, thank you, everybody for your indulgence. I'm gonna, uh, uh, we're going to get to the presentation of, uh, certificates. Uh, in just a moment, I'm going to ask for your indulgence for just another minute or two. Um, I want to make an announcement to our community and our staff, uh, as a sort of point of not personal privilege, but, uh, on behalf of the board. Uh, o- over the past month, we've seen a series of policy changes at the federal level that have, uh, perhaps left some in our community feeling concerned, uh, confused, or perhaps unsure of the path forward. Uh, and in these confusing and sometimes chaotic times, uh, you all should know that here in Cheltenham, we maintain certain values and principles that will not change. First and foremost, Cheltenham Township and our Board of, and the Board of Commissioners will continue to promote respect for all members of our community as we celebrate their diversity and strength. We remain committed to the principles of equity and inclusion in our legislative efforts, our provision of services to the public, our internal hiring practices, and our everyday interactions with community members and staff. It's imperative that our township government reflects and represents the community that it serves, including all of the unique perspectives, backgrounds and experiences that contribute to making Cheltenham our loving home. I thank you and my colleagues for your indulgence, but in times like these, it's even more important to embrace, protect, and most importantly proclaim our shared core values. So thank you. Thank you, everybody. Uh, and that's on behalf of the board. Um, so now we can get to, uh, what is going to be, uh, the highlight of this evening, which is the presentation of certificates honoring, uh, the following employees and ultimately volunteers. So we're going to start with employees. The following employees, uh, uh, have committed 20 years of service with Cheltenham Township, uh, during this year. And, uh, I will, uh, read off the names. I asked, when I read off your name, come on up. Uh, we have a certificate for you, uh, and, um, at some point we'll take a picture. So from the Police Department, 20 years of service, Lieutenant Andrew Snyder.
Thanks, Al.
All right. Also, uh, with 20 years of service in the Police Department, Sergeant Jero Francis. Is he here?
Unfortunately Sergeant Francis unable to make it tonight. We do have Sergeant Brewster here, however.
All right. So, uh, Sergeant Francis, congratulations wherever you are tonight. And, uh, our next, uh, officer with 20 years of service in the Police Department, Sergeant Kevin Brewster.
Kevin, please accept this certificate of meritorious faithful service, uh, for your 20 years of service to the Cheltenham Township Police Department. January 3rd, uh, 2000 and, I can put my, sorry. 2005 to January 3rd, 2025. He had my back. He was shouting that out. It was great. And a record of the certificate in the minutes of the Cheltenham Board of Commissioners meeting under the state, February 19th, 2025. Thank you for your service.
All right. Uh, I know what we're going to do all the, we'll do all the employees and then take a picture. Um, also a 20 years of service from our Public Works Department, William Morak Jr. And also for 20 years of service for, out of our, uh, EMS, Cynthia Wochtin. Cynthia? We'll save her certificate. Uh, we're also honoring employees, uh, who have provided 10 years of service to the township. Uh, this first one may be a familiar name is, uh, our manager, Allison Elliott. Also serving 10 years to the township, Henry Sekuwango, our Director of Planning and Zoning. I'm also going to announce, uh, 10 years of service, gratitude for 10 years of service from Mr. Robert Habgood, also from planning and zoning, but I think he couldn't be here tonight. So congratulations. And then also 10 years of service from Public Works, uh, our first, uh, uh, recipient is Steve Bailey. Also a 10 years of service from Public Works, Charles McEwen Jr. Also a 10 years of service to the township from Public Works, Stephen McDonald. And our final Township employee recipient for 10 years of service with Public Works, Eric Taggart. All right, before we go on to recognize our volunteers for their service, we're going to, uh, take a brief pause for a photograph. All right, thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to item, uh, item seven and eight. The first is, uh, presentations of certificates honoring the following volunteers for 20 years of service. Uh, first is Robert Armstrong, uh, who serves with Elkins Park Fire Company. Mr. Armstrong. All right. Also serving, uh, with Elkins Park Fire Company, Darren Harrison, 20 years. For 20 years of service with the Cheltenham Fire Company, William Posen. Mr. Posen. All right. We're, uh, move on to the presentation of certificates honoring the following volunteers on 10 years of service. First is Robert Gerhardt Jr. for the Civil Service Commission. And for his dedicated service to the library board, 10 years, uh, Myron Goldman. All right, we're just going to take one more minute for another picture. But let's get one more round of applause for our, uh, staff and volunteers. All right, um, back to business. Uh, yeah, you're welcome to stay, Myron. That's right. All right, item number nine, approval of the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting minutes dated January 22nd, 2025. And I will move, uh, for approval. Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number 10, acceptance of the executive summary financial report for the period ending December 31st, 2024. I'll move for acceptance. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item 11, acceptance of the accounts paid report for the period ending November 30th, 2024. Oh, excuse me, the period's ending November 30th, 2024 and December 31st, 2024. I'll move for acceptance of those two reports. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Onto item number 12, uh, Public Works met on February 5th. It's a robust agenda for Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. Take it away.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a number of items for review and approval. Uh, item 12A, approval of SEPTA's detours for the Eastern Road and Keswick Avenue Bridge replacement and repair projects with the commitments set forth in writing that SEPTA will comply with all items mentioned in their letter. Any questions or comments for members of the board? Uh, Mr. President, Mr. Arman.
M- Mr. Chairman, just a, a, a note that these detours are available for viewing on our website.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I'll, I'll move that this, uh, this be approved.
All the, any comments or questions on Commissioner Ziegmanfeld's motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item B, adoption of a resolution granting conditional approval and associated waivers for a preliminary final land development application, CTDA number 24 dash 06 for the Cedar Brook Shopping Plaza located at 1,000 Southeastern Road, Cheltenham PA, for the proposed construction of a 4,275 square foot bank building with a drive-through facility in place of an existing drive-through ATM structure. And there is a link on the township website. Any questions or comments from members of the board? I see none, so I'll move for approval, Mr. President.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item C, adoption of a resolution granting conditional approval and associated waivers for preliminary final land development application, CTDA number 24 dash 05 for the Cheltenham High School Football Stadium at 500 Rice's Mill Road, wind code PA involving improvements to the high school stadium with an artificial turf field and an infiltration bed beneath, bed beneath. Addition of sand pits for long jump, surfaces for high jump and pole vault functionalities, plus other field events, expansion of the bleachers for a total of 2,916 seats to accommodate typical or existing home and visiting crowds attendance. A structure to replace an entry gate, concession stand and restroom facilities, a new fencing. And again, this is available on the township website. Are there any questions or comments from, uh, members of the board? I see none, Mr. President, so I'll move for approval.
All those in favor of Commissioner Ziegmanfeld's motion, say aye.
Aye.
Item D, approval of a contract to Bowman on a lump sum basis in the amount of $328,000 for design, engineering and construction services on the Laurel Avenue Bridge Superstructure Replacement Project. And again, in each of these, there's been significant discussion. Are there any questions or comments on item D? I see none, so I'll move for approval, Mr. President.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item E, approval of contract to Bowman on a time and materials basis in the amount of $27,650 for design, engineering and construction services on the Cheltenham Hills Dry Pedestrian Improvements Project. Uh, again, all right, questions or comments from members of the board? I see none, so Mr. President, I'll move for approval.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item F, approval of a contract to Bowman on a times and material basis, up to $23,000. Let's take a zero off of that one, for construction services on Montgomery Avenue, Mill Road, uh, or should it be 230? Okay, thank you. 23,000 for construction services on the Montgomery Avenue, Mill Road, Surrey Road, Windsor Avenue Intersection Improvement Project. Any questions or comments on that item? I see none, so I'll move for approval, Mr. President.
Uh, motion, uh, uh, Motion for approval at $23,000, all those in favor say aye.
Thank you for the correction, Mr. President. Item G, authorized advertisement of an ordinance amending Chapter 290, Tucany-Tacone-Frankford Watershed Stormwater Management Ordinance, Article 8, Prohibition, Section 290-35 to 290-38, to comply with regulatory requirements as implemented through the township's municipal separate storm sewer system, the MS4 permit for stormwater discharges under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, which is the NPDES program. Again, there was discussion on this. Any questions or comments from members of the board? I see none, I'll move for approval, Mr. President.
All those in favor say aye.
Item H, authorized advertisement of an ordinance amending Chapter 291, Wisahickin Creek Watershed Stormwater Management Ordinance, Article 8, Prohibitions, Section 291-801 to 291-803, to comply with regulatory requirements as implemented through the township's municipal separate storm sewer system, the MS4 permit for stormwater discharges under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, the NPDES program. Any questions or comments from members of the board? I see none, Mr. President, I'll move for approval.
All those in favor say aye.
Almost done. Item I, adoption of a resolution entering into a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation as a representative of the Federal Highway Administration for the replacement of the bridge on Tucany Creek Parkway over to Tucany Creek. Again, discussions on that. Any questions or comments from members of the board? I see none, so, Mr. President, I will move for approval.
All those in favor say aye.
And with that, I will recommend approval of the Public Works' regular minutes dated February 5th, 2025.
Any comments or questions on Commissioner Ziegmanfeld's motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, acceptance of the minutes say aye.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Ziegmanfeld. Just for the public's sake, the, all of these are really important issues, and they have all been part of a much larger discussion at the Public Works meeting. So, I just want everyone to recognize that these are not just being sort of checked off here, they, they were the subject of lengthy discussions at the Public Works meeting and the formal legislative meeting is just addressing them. If there are any issues that come up, they certainly will be raised by the board or welcomed by the public. Moving on to item number 13, building and zoning met on February 5th, 2025. There is no business to bring before the board, so I will move for acceptance of the committee meeting minutes from that date. Any comments or questions?
Simply not fair, Mr. President.
It was a heavy lift, but you did well. All right, so all in favor of approval of the meeting minutes say aye. Thank you. Moving on to item 14, Public Safety Committee chaired by Commissioner Brockington met on February 12th, and he has a few items for us.
Yes, good evening, thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, we have four items to, all four items will need ordinance numbers. So, item 14A, adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 285, Vehicle and Traffic, Section 285-43, to add a handicap parking in front of 1705 Earland Road in Elkins Park, PA. Mr. President, I move for approval.
All right, could we have?
Well, we have an ordinance number first, I'm sorry.
Could we have an ordinance number, Manager Elliott?
Yes, that will be ordinance number 2481-25.
Now, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Armin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cherico.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Norris.
Aye.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item 14B, adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 285, Vehicle and Traffic, Section 285-43, to add a handicap parking in front of 1703 Chelsea Road in Elkins Park. An ordinance number, please.
That is ordinance number 2482-25.
Is there any comment or question on the proposal or the ordinance? All right, seeing none, Manager Elliott would take the roll?
Yes, Commissioner Armin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cherico.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Norris.
Aye.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Aye.
Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Aye.
It is unanimous.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, adoption of an ordinance amending 285, Chapter 285, Vehicle and Traffic, Section 285-43, to add a handicap parking in front of 1401 Beach Avenue in Elkins Park. Ordinance number, please.
That is ordinance number 2483-25.
And is there any comment or question on the proposed ordinance? Seeing none, Manager Elliott, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Armin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cherico.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Norris.
Aye.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Aye.
Unanimous.
Thank you. Last item for tonight is adoption of an ordinance amending Chapter 285, Vehicle and Traffic, Section 285-43, to add a no-left turn from 200 Eastern Road driveway onto the westbound Waverly Road, and a no-left turn from westbound Waverly Road into 200 Eastern Road driveway. And we will need an ordinance number.
It is ordinance number 2484-25.
And I'll just make one quick comment, that this is just one piece of a much larger plan to address the traffic issues, the ingress and egress off of Waverly Road at the 200 Eastern Road, Wawa. So, my appreciation to staff and the board for this one piece of a, of a larger puzzle. Any other comments or question on the proposed ordinance? Seeing none, Manager Elliott would please call the roll.
Commissioner Armin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brockington.
Aye.
Commissioner Cherico.
Aye.
Commissioner Lewis.
Aye.
Commissioner Norris.
Aye.
Commissioner Rappaport.
Aye.
Commissioner Ziegmanfeld.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Mr. President, I call for the approval of the minutes from our meeting that was held for Public Safety, February 12th, 2025.
Any comments or questions from the board? All right, all those in favor say aye. Thank you, Commissioner Brockington. Item 15, Public Affairs chaired by Commissioner Rappaport, also met on February 12th. Commissioner Rappaport, you have business for us at the board tonight?
Yes, I do, Mr. President. Here we go. 15A, award a one-year contract to Service Master Building Services to, with a not-to-exceed monthly cost of $2,370, that's monthly, yeah, to provide janitorial services for township facilities, subject to favorable evaluation of the bid documents submitted. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any comments or questions on this item? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Staff, well, I've got it on. Thanks. Authorizing staff to issue a request for proposals for a park beer garden program. Maybe you lost originally, I said I would move that on behalf of the committee.
Yeah, I think we did lose that. Okay, so it's moved. Is there any comment or question on the motion? All right, seeing none, we had some lengthy conversation at the committee meeting, and this is an exciting project for Parks and Rec that we, we anticipate is going to be very successful. So, all those in favor say aye.
Item 15C, the approval to issue a proclamation, recommitting to the National Wildlife Federation Mayor's Monarch Pledge to create habitat for the monarch butterfly and pollinators to promote the importance of monarchs as indicative of the broader environmental health. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Any comments or questions on the motion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Moving on to 15D, we were excited to receive and approve, well, recommend approval to appoint the following members to the Township Citizens Committees. Elise McBride of Windcoat, to be a voting member of the Historical Commission. Irene Lambrou of Elkins Park, to be an alternate for the zoning hearing board. Callum Wilson of Elkins Park, to be a voting member of the Civil Rights Task Force. Danielle Tagg of Cheltenham, to be a voting member on the Civil Rights Task Force. And Gregory Shire, Shire of Windcoat, to be a voting member of the Planning Commission. I so move.
Thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor say aye. And I'll just point out that thank you to these volunteers and anyone else out there in the public who is interested in volunteering their time for the township. We still have openings on many of our citizens committees, so I'd encourage you to reach out and contact either your commissioner, or reach out to the township building, and we'd be happy to direct, point you in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thanks. And the last item is to move acceptance of the February minutes of the Public Affairs meeting, with the typos corrected that I mentioned on, on email.
Thank you. So, motion for the minutes, approval of the minutes corrected, all those in favor say aye. Thank you, Commissioner Rappaport. Item 16, the Finance Committee also met on February 12th. Commissioner Norris is going to tell us about that.
Thank you, Mr. President. And first, my thanks to our Finance Director, Janice Solano, and her excellent team for their ongoing work in accounting and finance. Two items for the agenda tonight. 16A, authorize KCBA to begin the final design phase of Option 3 for the Lamont Community Center renovation project, inclusive of reduced alternates dependent upon further awards of grant funding. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. All right, I'll give you another chance. I'll, I'll move authorization of the Valbridge Property Advisors to complete appraisals on multiple properties located in the township in the amount of $38,610. Mr. President.
Thank you for the motion, Commissioner Norris. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
There being no further business that the Finance Committee discussed or has to approve tonight, I'll move acceptance of the meeting minutes dated February 12th, 2025.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of acceptance of the Finance Committee meeting minutes from February 12th say aye. Thank you, Commissioner Norris. Well done. Item number 17, the Pension Board Committee met on February 7th, 2025. There is no business to bring before the board, so I will move for approval of the meeting minutes. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Item number 18, old business. There's nothing on the agenda, but is there any old business from any member of the board? Staff? All right, we can dispense with old business and move on to new business. Item 19A, approval of an amendment to the Cooperation Agreement between Cheltenham Township, the Montgomery County Redevelopment Authority, and Drexel University, formerly known as Salis University, and there's an attachment. And before we have any questions or discussion, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. D'Azio, just to give us a quick overview of the purpose of this amendment.
Sure, thank you, Mr. President. This item before the board is essentially a non-substantive item because Salis was acquired by Drexel. There were certain contractual obligations that Salis had, and for reporting purposes with respect to the grant funding, the agreement that Salis had previously entered into needed to be formally assigned to Drexel, and the parties needed to reaffirm the contractual obligations that they had under the prior agreement. So, none of the terms are changing. This is simply acknowledging that Salis University as a party to that agreement no longer exists, and Drexel University is standing in the place of Salis.
Thank you for that, that explanation. So, I'll move approval of the amendment to the Cooperation Agreement. Is there any comment or question? Commissioner Ziegmanfeld?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, are there any fiscal obligations associated with this for the township?
No.
Thank you.
Asked and answered. So, any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of approval of the amendment to the Cooperation Agreement say aye. Item 19B, approval of a resolution awarding the sale of certain township-owned real estate on Limekiln Pike and West Cheltenham Avenue. They are parcels 31-00-17347-12-7, and parcel 31-00-17347-16-3. There's an attachment, but again, I'm going to turn it over to Township Manager Elliott, or Mr. D'Azio, whoever wants to take it, for a brief explanation.
Sure, so these are, this is two, two parcels of land that the township has put out to bid on a couple different occasions. In previous instances, when these properties were out to bid, the township was not satisfied with the responses in terms of the compensation that the township would receive for these two parcels. This time around, there is a recommendation from staff to accept an offer. The offer is in the amount of $1,502,000. And these are two parcels of land right along Cheltenham Avenue in the second ward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. D'Azio. And based on, during my tenure, there was, there was at least one, or maybe two RFPs put out, and we never came close to $1.5 million. So, this is, in my view, a really good opportunity for the township. Is there any other comment or question about this agenda item? All right.
Just to clarify for those who are listening, this still is, this property still is under both zoning and land development restrictions. So, even though it's, you know, a proposed thing, in the sale of it, there's still a great deal of scrutiny that'll be done by the board and by the staff.
Yeah, that's, that's a great point. The purchaser of this property is still bound by our zoning, land development, and all other codes of the township. So, that's an excellent point. Any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, I'll move for approval of the resolution awarding the sale of the identified parcels. All those in favor say aye. Is there any other new business from the board or from staff? All right, seeing none, I'll close new business. We'll open up item number 20, Citizens Forum. We have, we'll start here in the hall. Mr. Siegel, come on up. Please state your name, the area of the township where you live, and you'll have three minutes, Mr. Siegel.
Alan Siegel, 7900 Block of Ronald Lee Drive, Elkins Park. Last time I was here, I was bringing up the issue with the fire pit in the nature preserve. You said you were going to take it under advisement. You know what happened? Karma. The house burnt down. Two houses suffered damage. Has anybody here seen the results of the fire? Now, I will say, Fire Commissioner Lynch's people did a great job. I mean, thank you for that, because I'm sitting in the back watching the flames shoot up, and there's the nature preserve. All right? So, I'm proposing you pass an ordinance to go alongside of no leaf burning, no fire pits on township property. That's number one. Number two, and these houses are going to be 47 years this summer, I'd like to see that part of the nature preserve cleaned out. It can't just be nature, natural, whatever. Too many dead trees, leaves, I mean, it's a tinderbox. All right? Now, if you don't believe me, there's an old trail, paved trail from the old estate. If, if you know it, it's between Hidden Lane and Dixon. It's got two stone pillars with- It's got two stone pillars with a chain across, so cars don't drive on it. Police are always there, they're always parked. Take a walk back there. You can see the house. You can see that section of the nature preserve between Ronald Lee and Amson, and you can see how dry it is, and how much dead shrubs and trees are there. So, I'd like to have the township somehow clean it out. Right, from the driveway to where it ends. All right. And I think our fire commissioner would agree with me on that, because I think we had almost every, was there almost every piece of equipment there at the fire? Yeah.
For the fire on Anselm Road, there was quite a bit of equipment there, yes.
Yeah, I think I saw everything parked on Dixon, the whole bit. And like I said, I watched it from the back. And those flames were up in the air. There was a tree that caught fire. I think it went either way. All right, so, I'd like to see something done about it. I don't want to have to keep coming. I don't want to have to bring members of the Elkins Parks Neighbors Association here one by one, talking to three minutes till 3 o'clock in the morning. Because if that's what you want, we'll make it happen. All right, and the other thing, are you going to be responsible if there's a fire back there? And I think that's all I have to say tonight. I hope I got my point across. Because this is a safety, it's a safety hazard right now.
Thank you, Mr. Segal. And, and thank you to our fire volunteer, fire departments, for handling that fire, which, as I understand it, did not result from a fire pit. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. President, that is correct.
Thank you. Okay, any other Citizens Forum? Yeah, here in the hall. And Ms. Bowers, we'll get to you. We're just going to address folks in the hall first, and then we'll get to the Zoom. Ma'am, just state your name and the area of the township where you live, and then you'll have three minutes, okay?
Lisa Payne-Cherico, Spring Avenue, Elkins Park. And I want to address a pressing issue for the residents of Spring Avenue, especially the six houses that are up from the Septa Train Station. As more commuters are now going back into, into town, they are parking in front of our houses for long periods of times, vacations and so on. And it's hard to find parking. It's not very convenient for the residents there. We're constantly having to juggle with trying to save spaces for when we have workers coming, yard work being taken care of, and it's just increasing hassle. Now, Septa's very nicely has said that you can park in their lot for, from 5:00 AM to 2:00 AM for $2. With my current taxes, the park in front of my house, it's about $30 a day, and I don't see any of that. So, I would, so, we would really like to, it to be considered that Spring Avenue, or at least a partial portion of Spring Avenue, become residence-only parking. And I know you could say, well, why don't you just park in, in your driveway? Well, I don't have a driveway. And another one of my neighbors doesn't have a driveway because he butts right up next to the Septa Train Station. My house in particular, there's a telephone pole and a speed limit pole. And I've been told year after year, and we've lived there for over 24 years. Well, my husband passed away last year. But we, and we were told that we can't have a driveway because of the telephone pole and the speed limit pole, or I can get an easement from my neighbor where I can go halfway up their driveway and turn left. So, that's just a nonstarter. So, if, I don't know who I need to speak to about this, but we really would like to have it considered, to be taken into consideration to have a residence-only parking.
So, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your comment. We're sorry for your loss. And I think Manager Elliott may have some comments about parking, the parking ordinance that we are reviewing now, and that I anticipate will come before the board at some point in the near future. But I'll turn it over to Manager Elliott.
Yes, thank you. Yes, we are working on a revision to our parking ordinance following the, excuse me, following the implementation of Park Mobile. And we have been taking a look at some of our residential permit parking areas, and I believe there is a section of Spring Avenue, probably exactly where you're talking about, that we have included for residential permit parking. So, we're working on cleaning that, finishing that up, and hope to have it to the board for review in the next month or so, a couple months.
Thank you.
Mr. President, question?
Yeah, Commissioner Lewis.
With the residential permit parking, would the residents have to pay?
That is correct. It's, it's a nominal annual fee, though.
Thank you.
I know, I know that, at least in Glen Side, Commissioner Lewis, that there are commuters who utilize the residential streets to the detriment of the residents who live there. And the permit process allows our police department to help enforce and make sure that our residents are being, are not being overwhelmed by commuters on those streets. So, Commissioner Norris?
Thank you, Mr. President. To the resident, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, but I'm highly confident that, as our township manager said, that we should be able to address this issue. Over at the Melrose Park Train Station, a number of years ago, there was a similar issue, and permit parking was set up for a one block or half a block next to that train station.
Okay. Anyone else here in the hall for public comment? All right, we'll move to our Zoom guests. I know that Ms. Bowers had her hand up earlier. Are you still interested in making public comment, Ms. Bowers?
Oh, I am, thank you.
Go ahead, three minutes.
Kathy Bowers, I just actually wanted to, I wanted to jump in earlier when we were talking about the SPS incident. That, first of all, I wanted to say a lot of people have left. Thank you to everyone who is out there, who's still out there, who will be making an effort for a long time to come. I really just wanted, you know, we, as you were talking about, you know, everything going on and the environment, now, you know, all the activity that happened and what will happen. I just wanted to really say, you know, SPS, my house is less than a half a mile away from SPS. My father walked there every day for 55 years to work, and still have a family member that is employed there 47 years. And for us to remember that this is going to be such an impact on, on our community as, you know, a whole, and what happened to all those people that lost their jobs. So, I just really want to, you know, people to take that time to think about them, reach out to people you know. This is going to be a great impact, you know, on their, their lives, their everyday life. It's not like they're going to clean up and go back to work next week. They probably have permanently lost their jobs. So, this is going to be a life impacting for everybody in the community, not just in ours, but everybody that worked there all over. That company's been here for a long time. So, you know, take a moment, reach out to anyone you know. You know, I'm going to try to see what I can do in that instance that we move forward. Obviously, the company there will have a lot going on, but I just want everyone to kind of remember, you know, as we talk about all the, you know, air quality and money and what money we're getting back, is to remember the people that this is going to impact their everyday lives. So, just kind of wanted to put that out there. I appreciate it to everybody, you know, that evening. And it's just, kind of just going to be a real surreal area for a long time. So, thank you.
But thank you, Ms. Bowers. Yeah, the, I think the saying goes, everybody knows somebody who works or worked at SPS. So, your comments are appreciated.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Helstrom, you have the floor and three minutes.
Okay, is this sound working?
We can hear you.
I just want to thank, I live on Anselm Road, next to the house that burned down. And I just want to thank the fire department and all the firemen for making sure that my house at least was safe. They sprayed water between them. They put up the tree that caught on fire between our houses. And I wasn't even home, but on the Ring camera, I could see they were walking back and forth on my deck and just kind of checking things, so. It was a shame what happened to the other house, but at least my house was safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Helstrom. Yeah, our, we've said it a number of times, but it's worth repeating, our fire marshal staff and our volunteer fire companies are really just exceptional. So, thank you for your comments. Any other comments for Citizens Forum? Going once, twice, all right? We'll close Citizens Forum, and I appreciate everyone's time tonight. And I will move for adjournment of tonight's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.